All right, welcome everyone. It is Tuesday, February 7th, 2023, and we are gathered for the monthly business meeting of the Athens Clark County Mayor and Commissioner. First item of business tonight is to call roll, so I'm going to ask Clerk Spratlin to do that for us.
Davenport.
Here.
Taylor.
Right.
Present.
Fisher.
Here.
Hool.
Here.
Pepper.
Here.
Myers.
Here.
Thornton.
Here.
Hamby.
Here.
All right, thank you, Madam Clerk. All right, next item is to approve the minutes of voting meetings of Tuesday, January 3rd, Tuesday, January 17th, and non-voting meetings of Tuesday, January 12th, Tuesday, January 17th, Friday, January 27th, and Tuesday, January 31st. Commissioner Hool?
I'll move to approve the minutes with those couple minor revisions I sent out in an email earlier.
Motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, I've got a second from Commissioner Myers. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Madam Clerk, are there any written communications tonight?
No, we have none tonight.
All right. Madam Clerk, has anybody signed up for a 10-minute period on zoning?
Uh, one person. Four.
Wonderful, all right, thank you much. All right, just to let everybody know, there will be several opportunities for public input, and we're somewhat reordering compared to our normal course of events. So we're going to see the consent agenda first. We're going to have a public hearing and deliberation on three items that have gone through our planning department. We're then going to have public input and deliberation on old and new business. We are going to receive a report from myself, the manager, and attorney, have opportunity for input from commissioners, hear any item from the public not on the agenda they would like to speak to, and then at the close of business, we have a short executive session on a single real estate acquisition or disposal matter. So, given that's the case, order of public input is generally the same. So you will have three minutes to provide public input for most items, save zoning items, which I'll get to in just a minute. And in that public input, if you step up to the mic, please identify yourself and the item to which you are speaking. That three minutes will feature a green light in front of Clerk Spratlin. When you have 30 seconds remaining, you will see that light turn yellow, and when your three minutes has expired, that light will be red. So, is there any member of the public who would like to speak to any item on the consent agenda this evening? And those are items 1 through 4. 1 through 4. All right, seeing none, I want to come to the members of the commission. Is any commissioner interested in removing an item from the consent agenda for discussion? All right, these are handled in a single vote. Would any commissioner like to make a motion as soon as the attorney reads any ordinances?
There is an ordinance associated with Agenda Item Number 1, the JAG grant. An ordinance to amend the FY 2023 operating capital budget for Athens Clark County, Georgia, so as to provide grant funding if awarded from the U.S. Department of Justice 2022 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Grant for the purpose of a mental health and community engagement ban in the sheriff's office and for other purposes.
All right, thank you Attorney Drake. Motion for the consent agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
All right, I've got a motion from Commissioner Hool for the consent agenda approval, and a second from Commissioner Fisher. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. All right, we're moving on now to planning and zoning items. In regard to planning and zoning, there was one additional opportunity for public input, and so a proponent or opponent of an item may sign up in advance for up to a 10-minute slot, and we have one of those for the second item. But the first item, item number 5, regards several addresses on Atlanta Highway, and so now it's time for public input on this item. And ask anyone who'd like to speak to to come on up to the mic. Give us your best shot. Three minutes. Good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Scott Haynes. I work for WNA Engineering, representing the mall application this evening, reside at 2081 Clockfelter Road. The plan that's before you this evening that was shown in the agenda setting is the mall plans. We know it now. I wanted to say just how we got there. During the period that precedes this, it was about two years' worth of planning is what this represents. The prior plan was essentially rejected by the community in terms of what it offered. And the developers didn't merely tweak the plan after that, they went back and really scrapped the plan altogether and started from scratch, hired new consultants, and started over. The formation of this new plan, which is before you tonight, came as a result of, you know, over 100 man-hours interaction with staff across all the departments. It considered the comments made by the community and the planning staff. Result of that plan, we believe, strikes a balance between the community desires and the developers' need for a viable project. The plan provides for much-needed workforce housing and affordable housing. It removes nearly 20 acres of impervious surface. It provides for stormwater management that does not currently exist at the mall property today. It would replace approximately 200 trees, of a large majority of which are declining in nature in the parking lot. And it would replace those with well over 1,000 new trees planted in conformance with the current ACC planting requirements. It would provide nearly 1 and 1/2 miles of 12-foot-wide multi-use pathway, in addition to all the other sidewalk and pedestrian infrastructure shown on the plan. It provides for a transit station for ACC, which is a key component for a larger needed transportation network. But most importantly, it provides a best-in-class solution to turn around a declining development, which not only solves the issue for the property itself, but could potentially be a catalyst for the redevelopment and revitalization of a larger Atlanta Highway corridor. We appreciate the enormous amount of effort, work, time, that has gone into this, and it comes to you at this hour with the likelihood of being tabled. We understand that that is necessary so that we can align both the plan development vote with the community benefits agreement. We're in full support of that. We're here tonight to say thank you, first off, for allowing us this opportunity, and I'm available for questions if there are any.
Thank you, Mr. Haynes. Anyone else here to speak to item number 5, Atlanta Highway? All right, seeing none, I know Commissioner Hool has just referenced there's interest in tabling this until the 21st. Would you like to make such a motion?
Yeah, I'd like to motion to hold the... Do we need to do the future land use and the rezonance two separate hold motions? Yeah, so, motion to hold the future land use change for consideration under suspension of rules at a special-called session that will include public input on Tuesday, February 21st.
Second.
All right, I've got a motion from Commissioner Hool, a second from Commissioner Myers. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I just wanted to share a couple remarks, if I may. Just came out of the mall area redevelopment committee meeting. That's one of the multiple TAD advisory committees that serve this project, and I'm hopeful that we're going to get all the information we need, and we're going to get to a point where that agreement is to everyone's liking in time for this meeting, and we can do the two in tandem. No doubt, this decision hinges on our ability to also figure out that, and I'm optimistic about that. I do also just want to take a moment to reiterate that I do think the design of this project is very good. I think they've done a remarkable job of going back to the drawing board and bringing back before us a substantial change that aligns with what many in the community, including this body and our planning commission, and many members of the public have said they want to see there. It may not be perfect, but it's a heck of a lot better than what we've got. So I'm hopeful that we can figure out the community benefits agreement to everyone's satisfaction and move forward with what I think is going to be a transformative project for the West Side.
Thanks, Commissioner. Commissioner Myers, any additional input, a second or...
No, thank you.
Any additional input from members of the body?
I was going to read the ordinances.
Go right ahead.
Ordinance to amend, the first is related to the official land use map. An ordinance to amend the code of Athens Clark County, Georgia, with respect to amending the official land, future land use map of Athens Clark County by changing the designation of 74.8 acres of land located at 3,700, 3706, 3708, and 3710 Atlanta Highway from employment center and general business to general business and for other purposes. And the other ordinance is related to the rezoning. Ordinance to amend the code of Athens Clark County, Georgia, with respect to rezoning six parcels of land comprising 74.8 acres located at 3700, 3706, 3708, 3710 Atlanta Highway from CG Commercial General to CGPD Commercial General Plan Development and for other purposes.
All right, thanks Attorney Drake, I appreciate it. All right, first vote regards a hold for the future land use designation. There's a motion from Commissioner Hool, and a second from Commissioner Myers. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we do need a second vote for the rezoning. Entertain a motion regarding that.
Make a motion to hold the rezon for consideration under suspension of rules at a special-called session that will include public input on Tuesday, February 21st.
Second.
All right, got a motion from Commissioner Hool, a second from Commissioner Myers for a similar hold for the rezoning. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, see you again in two weeks. All right, next item is item 6. This regards the River Mills development. And so, we do have somebody signed up. We've got Ed Lane signed up for the 10 minutes. And Mr. Lane, if you're ready, come on down.
Good evening, I'm Ed Lane with Smith Planning Group, and speaking on behalf of the Athens River Mill Project. And I actually will not need anywhere near the 10 minutes. Sorry about the miscommunication there. But I'm joined here also by Sam Newman with American Campus Communities, the owner of this land and the developer, as well as other members of the team. And I want to just thank Commissioner Wright, planning staff, and many others on helping to work out the CDO. And want to be mindful of your time tonight. You've already spent considerable time reviewing this, and so really, we're just here to be available to answer any remaining questions you may have. And yeah, we're excited about this project and revitalizing this little corner of Athens. So, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Lane. Is anyone else here to speak to the River Mill Project? Item number 6. All right, seeing none, this is in Commissioner Wright's district, and Commissioner Wright, I know you've crafted a commission find option for this. If you'd like to introduce that and make a motion.
Yeah, I make a motion that the commission to find option that's in the packet and that I've shared with everybody, that we approve that. It's just, I'm the vehicle for it, and really, the group listened to what the chief, fire chief's concerns were, solved it, and then got his check off. Brad in planning also did a great job moving this through, the attorney's office, I think, Austin, and then Gene Spratlin made it into the packet on Friday, and I really appreciate all that extra work last week. And so I make a motion that we move this commission to find option forward for the redevelopment. Oh, we got the land use, land use, we got two votes.
For future land use is the first one.
Okay.
So can you move for the future land use amendment?
Amendment.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right, got a second from Commissioner Myers. Attorney Drake, can you read that ordinance, just so we've written that, read that into the record?
An ordinance to amend the... Excuse me. An ordinance to amend the code of Athens Clark County, Georgia, with respect to amending the official future land use map of Athens Clark County by changing the designation of 10.51 acres of land located at 199 Stone Mill Run and 450 Baldwin Street from mixed-density residential and general business to downtown and for other purposes.
All right, thanks Attorney Drake. Any follow-up, a second or Commissioner Myers?
Yeah, I just want to thank Commissioner Wright and Chief Scarborough and all the staff who worked on this. I rode by the site, not because it was between my home and here, and was thinking how appropriate it is to have that very dense student housing right in that area, as much as, well, let's put it, I'm going to just put it in positive light, that this is private property where we're, students are being housed, and that gives us the property taxes from those developments that help us maintain the community and our infrastructure. And so I think this is exactly the appropriate place to have this kind of housing.
Thanks, Commissioner. Any further input on this item? All right, we've got a motion and a second for the future land use amendment. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? All right, motion carries. All right, we need a motion now regarding the rezoning.
So I make a motion for the rezoning.
Second.
As presented with the commission to find option details.
Motion from Commissioner Wright for the commission to find rezoning, second from Commissioner Hool. Is there a separate ordinance for this, Attorney Drake?
An ordinance to amend the code of Athens Clark County, Georgia, with respect to rezoning two parcels of land comprising 10.51 acres of land located at 199 Stone Mill Run and 450 Baldwin Street from RM2 mixed-density residential and CGPD Commercial General Plan Development to CDRIVPD Commercial Downtown River Design Area Plan Development and for other purposes.
Great, thank you Attorney Drake. Any further input on this, Commissioner Hool?
Yeah, and thanks again to Commissioner Wright for leading the charge on the CDO for this project in your district. I also really want to thank staff for getting it together. You know, the whole reason we have a commission to find option in front of us is because of that memo we got from our fire chief about building height, and we have, you know, I think this challenge of, when we have projects like this that are looking to increase density in places that I think we know we want and need density, and density means building up, we have a cap that I'm not convinced is necessarily fully rationally based. I'm hoping that we can maybe reevaluate the building height ordinance and the way that interacts with policies of other departments, because I think the fire chief raised some good concerns. I'm sure there's probably other concerns from other departments like PUD, and so I just asked respectfully if the mayor would consider assigning, perhaps to a committee, ad hoc or one of our committees, consideration of building height in our code, and perhaps also how that may or may not align with consideration of impact fees or fire service fees.
Any further input? All right, we have a motion from Commissioner Wright for the commission to find option on the rezoning, and a second from Commissioner Hool. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Go for it and do well. All right, next item regards our 2023 comprehensive plan update. This is something of a multi-phase process for members of the public. We have a state responsibility to update our comprehensive plan in a big way every decade, and then we do sort of a midterm update, and this is really going to involve lots of elements of our land use planning in the months ahead. But a requisite stop along the train line is approval of this and transmission to the state, and so we need to take that formal action. And so I'd entertain a motion from the body for this transmission to the state.
Sold.
Got a motion from Commissioner Davenport, is there a second?
Second.
Got a second from Commissioner Myers.
Mr. Mayor, I think we might, this might be, I'm going to need to get public comment on it.
I do need to get public comment, I appreciate it. All right, if anyone would like to comment on the comprehensive plan update, now is that time. Good evening.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm Michael H. McClendon, I live in Princeton Mill off South Lomcan Street. I want to talk about item 7, comprehensive plan, not to eject to it, but to hopefully encourage you to think about how to improve the overall planning process, because I think this is deficient. I recognize the challenge in such complex endeavors, I've been involved in them before. I understand that they're ever evolving. But when I look at this 88-page document, and I don't know how many of you have actually read it, it's really like a brochure. It's more like the old Sears and Roebuck slick page catalog with all kind of wishes in it, except the Sears and Roebuck catalog was superior because it had prices in it. And you could figure it out what things were going to cost and what was affordable. This is no such thing. There is no analysis about constraints and challenges. For example, it does not evaluate the adequacy of community facilities and infrastructure for meeting future needs, particularly our road infrastructure. There's no strategy for making more efficient use of existing facilities. It's not physically constrained. There's no priority particularly for investment in our aging infrastructure. There's no plan of actions and milestones. There are 182 items in the back listed in the community work plan that are not traceable to what's in the rest of the document, and there are no priorities or identification of interrelated, interdependent, or linked projects whatsoever. It's just kind of a hootenanny list of, list of projects. And it's not clear to me that it actually meets DCA requirements, much less their optional plan requirements for such documents. Second thing I want to remind us all is that Athens Clark County is the smallest geographical county in the state of Georgia. So anything we do in one part of the county ripples very quickly and impacts everything else in the county. Athens is the third fastest-growing metropolitan statistical area in Georgia, North Carolina, South Carolina, and eastern Tennessee, with Raleigh and Charleston leading the pack. The democratic, demographic shift of millennials east is like a tidal wave. Barra County is the second fastest-growing county in the state, behind Jackson and Oconee's not far behind. As these communities continue to expand, it will drive more traffic to and from Athens. As you know, we all say that if you go to heaven or hell, you have to go through the Atlanta Airport, right? Well, if you go anywhere in this area, in surrounding counties, where do you go? You go through Athens. Just as the Georgia Square Mall is not up to the task in 2022 and beyond, our current planning process, as evidenced by this plan and what we're going through with the mall redevelopment process, is not up to the task in 2022.
Thank you, Mr. McClendon.
It needs to be changed.
Appreciate it. All right, is anyone else here to speak to item 7? All right, we've got a motion from Commissioner Davenport, who is the second or...
I was.
Commissioner Myers is the second or... Commissioner Davenport, any further input?
Yes, I, excuse me. I really appreciate staff and the hard work they put into, to this project. The comprehensive plan is very detailed. The crux of it really starts at, towards the back, and I appreciate the level of commitment that staff has put towards improving our community. There's a lot of great stuff that was in the original 2018 plan that this plan is going to update, or intend to, to update, like broadband and infrastructure and stuff like that, but, you know, I just want to appreciate staff for their hard work, and I think this is a great document, and I really appreciate the amount of effort and detail that went into it.
Thanks, Commissioner. Commissioner Myers, any follow-up?
Yeah, I'm supporting this tonight to move forward, but I do share some of the concerns that are, one of our commenter, public comment put forth, and some of the concerns I heard expressed by the, the planning commission as well, in terms of this document and the parts of it fitting together. I happen to have the opportunity to attend a, a training from the Association of County Commissioners of Georgia last Friday that was talking about planning and future land use, and it, it made a very simple point, they made a very simple point for me, but tied one more thing together, and said, we're talking about the comp plan being the critical, the critical document that you use when you're working on the future land use plan, which I know is right on our list of things for the planning department. And so I, I did want to ask the manager or whoever can approach, can address this, whether or not there will be, in the future land use plan development, that there will be opportunities to review some of these goals in here as well, like, or, I guess, because some of this hasn't changed since the plan of 2018, how are we going to be looking at what we have here tonight as we move forward with the future land use plan? Does that make sense?
It does, and I'm glad, and Brad, please, what I would offer to you that, this is, so the actual comprehensive plan is a 10-year document, of course, 2018, 2028, and this is a mid, mid-process check-in, so it's not meant to be a full-on comprehensive plan, and it's setting up the stage for the processes that you talked about, which each one of those, you know, discussion of the future land use map and the ensuing components of the future comprehensive plan, there will be a very public process that we will go through. Brad, I don't know if you had anything to add.
The only thing I would add, and thank you, Manager Williams, is that, I mean, it is our full intention as we move into growth concept map and, and future land use, is we came to you in September and said, it's important we get this started, we need to do it. One, because it's been a long time, and two, when we do that, it's done with community involvement, it's done with departmental involvement from other departments. I mean, we can't do our land use map update without the utilities department being with us, and the transportation public works, and leisure services. All those people play a role to develop that plan update. I mean, really, what we start now with the growth concept map is going to be a continuum all the way through to the 28th adoption of the 10-year. It's probably honestly a five-year endeavor with the work that we need to do and the finalization of the 28th plan.
So, so as we do that, the infrastructure needs of the, will be brought up from the appropriate departments for public understanding and our understanding as well?
Absolutely.
Okay, great.
Commissioner Hamby?
And I guess to follow up on, on Commissioner Myers, so when the infrastructure's brought up, or any other things brought up, the cost associated with doing those projects will also be included in the document, as well, is that right? I mean, I think it's helpful to, to know that, as far as future SPOS goes, or whatever.
The work program has kind of varied back and forth through the years. I mean, it used to be 15 and 20 years ago that there were very specific work items with very specific dollars, and we went into the 2000s and it kind of got more general and more goal-based, and, but we, there are a lot of issues, we need to get back to that, and it will include monetary figures.
Yeah, I think that'd be helpful for, for us and for, for the public at large to understand, you know, just the cost of things.
Follow-up on that one, Andrew Williams?
Thank you, and I appreciate your comments, Commissioner Hamby. So, the comprehensive plan theoretically would be sort of a guiding document on what we're going to do, but it doesn't function fully in that fashion, and as you know, we have various other master plans that help to inform your relative priorities. When we talk about SPOS projects, you know, there's Greenway Network Plan, Athens Emotion Plan, you know, in May Court, you've got your long transportation improvement plan. So there, there are all sorts of things that are out there, and as we discussed at the retreat, you know, we really do want to, you know, we've got our capital budgeting process, which you approve every year, but doesn't, isn't really reflective of what the lifecycle needs of our infrastructure are. And as I noted to you the other day, we're committed to, you know, understanding what those, what those budgetary requirements would be to try and be on a lifecycle track. I dare say we're not there yet. I'm not sure the comp plan is where that, you know, where the rubber meets the road. It could be, and we can certainly inform that, but we do have other sources of information that tell the story on our infrastructure.
Thanks, Andrew Williams. Commissioner Fisher?
Yes, um, got two things. Question, what's our timeline in getting this to the state?
We will, we transmit this, once you vote to send it forward this evening, we, we transmit it with a letter from the mayor to the regional commission, it goes to the state, they will review it and provide comments back to us. We anticipate receiving that document back in March or April, address the comments that they have, and then it comes back to this body, ideally in May, for a May-June approval to, to keep us on track for adoption prior to the July deadline.
And when do we have to have a final document then, to them? What would be...
The final document is due to them by July 1 of this year, yes.
Okay. So what my concern is, you know, with me just coming on the commission, as a new commissioner, it's a lot, you know, and I've tried to read as much of this as possible, and I know listed our stakeholders and people that played a part, but I'm still trying to grasp some of the things that's in there, so feel a little bit comfortable that we're going to get it back and be able to review it and look over it, but that's, that's sort of my concern, because there's just so much, and we're being a new commissioner, first to sort of make an intelligent vote on this and to move forward with it.
And we are absolutely happy at your convenience, between now and then, to sit down with you and take as much time as you need to go through it, and we'll go through it with you, any of the new commissioners. Happy to do that.
Commissioner Thorne?
I did have a comment, but I think everybody kind of addressed what my comment was. I do appreciate the speaker tonight. I think that good points were raised. I thank the, our staff, but this is, it's a huge undertaking, but I think the community wants us to be more physically, physically, not exercise, physical, responsible, so I'm glad it's going to come back, and I hope we took notes of the comments that were made tonight.
Commissioner Hool?
Yeah, this is definitely an ambitious effort to consolidate, consolidate an ambitious array of very large detailed documents, but I would like to just highlight a couple things in it. You know, one is the very last page, page 94 of 94, links to some other very little documents in which a lot of measurable outcomes or further definition can be found, in addition to our T-SPOS and SPOS project lists, which are available on the website. So there is more backing up this document that might appear within it, and I really want to give a thanks to Bruce Lonnie, who had presented on this with us a couple times before tonight. He sat down with me and helped me, you know, I'm fairly new myself, Commissioner Fisher, and he really helped walk me through a lot of the context of this, it was very helpful. But part of that was, the 2013 comprehensive plan is like three large binders, like this is literally the size of that, you know, and then they consolidated that down to one very large document in 2018, and... very large document in 2018, and now we have this, you know, quite a bit smaller document. So part of that's to try to create a document that people actually want to read and engage with, and then from there link out to other ones. So, so don't be confused with this document fully capturing everything that it's referencing, if that makes sense, I think. Um, and, uh, and the other thing I just wanted to invite, if someone from the manager's office or Director Griffin would like to talk about it, is, you know, I think, um, Bruce and others in the Planning Department have been, you know, quite candid and humble about the way that this process can be improved moving forward to have an even more robust public input process and, and do a better job next time around. Um, so I don't know if there's anything that y'all would like to add just about how you're, how you're looking to, you know, do even better and more next time.
I don't know that we're prepared with specifics at this point, all I can tell you is that, you know, as we've indicated previously, it's, it's time to get into this big time again, we're excited about it as a staff to move forward and look forward the next four to five years of work.
Yeah.
Any other input from the body? All right, I've got a motion from Commissioner Davenport and a second from Commissioner Myers. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we're sending it off to Atlanta and we'll get it back from them soon. All right, uh, next order of business is public input on old and new business, so those are items eight through 13. So if any member of the public would like to speak to any of these items, now is that time. You can line up if you'd like, that makes it convenient for everybody else. Good evening, just give us your name and note the item to which you're speaking.
Hey, y'all, it's been a while since I've been at this podium. Um, I want to urge you to go ahead and pass the concept for number 11, um, the Barber Street Bike Plan, um, for the concept between Chase Street and Boulevard. Um, but I want to urge you to, um, hold off on the leg between Boulevard and Prince Avenue. That segment of this plan is currently, has no representation on the commission, those neighborhoods on either side of that corridor have no representation on this commission. That corridor runs right through the Boulevard neighborhood, um, which is, you know, an extremely active neighborhood association with some highly engaged citizens, yet they've not been reached out to for input on this project. Um, I've, I've spoken with the president of that association, they've received no outreach. Um, they had their annual meeting, uh, a weekend or so ago, and that would have been a perfect opportunity to present this project. Um, that leg of, of the project differed significantly from what was presented over a year or so ago, uh, and I'm not sure that people fully understand what it entails, there's a, a lot of, um, well, the price tag went up significantly, there's a lot of utility poles, construction, trees are going to be taken out. I know that some yards are going to be taken, I did speak with a property owner who owns several rental, rental properties on the corridor, and he's deeply concerned and then feels like he hasn't had the opportunity to fully engage with the concept. Um, so I just think it would be prudent to wait, go ahead and pass the rest of it, but, um, wait on that one leg so there can be some proper engagement with the folks who actually use that corridor. I use it, well, I used to use it, you know, several times a week, um, before the Prince Avenue bike lanes came online, um, and, and now I don't have a need to, but I still do use it from time to time, and I, and I have noticed that, you know, traffic has slowed since the Prince Avenue bike lanes have come on, and, and the, the primary issue with that corridor was the speed of traffic. I'm not sure that this concept is going to address auto speed at all, so I really feel like there needs to be some back and forth engagement with the folks in the immediate neighborhood who actually use that corridor for walking and biking and driving on a regular basis, and so that they can at least feel heard and at least have an understanding of what's being presented, because quite frankly, everybody I've talked to doesn't even know this is on the table. So, um, just hold off and save it for, you know, a late April or May vote. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Link. Would anyone else like to speak to old or new business, items eight through 13?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm Teresa Friedlander, 115 Middleton Place, and tonight I am also speaking about agenda item 11, the T-SPOLOs 2018 Projects 11 and 12 Barber Street Bike and Pedestrian Improvements. First, I would like to thank the Commissioners who participated in the walk audit. The weather was really bad, and so what would normally be a pleasant exercise was not. Um, I'm Vice Chair of the Athens in Motion Commission, and I'm speaking in support of the project of, of putting forward the concept for all four segments. As Athens in Motion Commissioners, our most important job is to advise you about bicycle and pedestrian projects with the goal of creating county-wide connected network for alternative transportation. The Barber Street Project is the most complex we've worked on. Uh, each of the four project segments from Dairy Pack Road to Prince Avenue presents unique challenges. Uh, ACC's, uh, engineering and design team have proposed solutions for each segment, which will create a safe and seamless way for walking and biking the length of Barber Street and then connecting to Prince. Um, and this will allow residents, businesses, to connect with businesses, places of work, human services, recreation, et cetera. Segment four, from Boulevard to Prince Avenue, provides a critical connectivity link, as, as I said, it, it will connect to the new, uh, bike lanes on Prince Avenue. The safest and most cost-effective solution would remove the on-street parking, and this would also limit the impact on the street-facing homes, uh, that have pretty narrow front yards, and Athens in Motion supports this option. ACC staff, including the Tool Design Group, have done an exceptional job of developing the Barber Street conceptual designs, so on behalf of Athens in Motion, I want to thank them by letting you know how much we appreciate their very thorough work to develop this important piece of bike and pedestrian infrastructure. By voting to approve the concepts before you, Athens in Motion will then be able to open up a robust public engagement process to bring all stakeholders to the table, because we want to make sure that everyone, uh, who has a concern has their chance to be involved in the process. Thank you so much for your consideration. Good night.
Thanks, Ms. Friedlander. Any other input on old or new business? Again, those are items eight through 13. Evening.
Good evening. Hi, I'm Russell Edwards, Athens-Clark County resident. Mr. Mayor, I'm, I'm in favor of, uh, the staff work that they've done on the T-SPOLOs project, item number 11. One conversation I'm most proud of us having in this community more and more is the fact that if we really want to create a safe place for children to recreate and ride their bicycles in this community, if we want children to live a full, independent life, then we have to have a protected bicycle lane. A strip of paint is insufficient to give any child a sense of security or any parent a sense of confidence that their child will be safe. And I'm so happy that staff has listened to the community and created a project, uh, first on Prince Avenue, um, showing that we can do this, and again, carrying it forward, expanding the network, creating more opportunities for people to safely navigate, for children to, to safely ride their bicycle in this community. This is just a concept, and it's going to make this community a better place to live for everybody. You look at all the development up and down Barber Street, the new businesses, the new small businesses, the Habitat for Humanity Bouvet, the new multifamily residences, the thriving commerce around Chase Street Warehouse, this is the perfect place for this type of development. Every bicycle we see is, is one less car. Every bicycle we see is one less car. Let's build the community we want to see, let's build the infrastructure we want our citizens to use. If we build it, the children will feel safe and the children will use it, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards. Anyone else here to speak to old or new business items tonight? Evening.
Good evening, and I'm super nervous, so I hope I do okay. Um, I've never done this before. Um, my name is Lorraine O'Kelly, I'm an Athens-Clark County resident, and I am here about item number 13, I believe. District Attorney Deborah Gonzalez wants you and us to spend up to $50,000 to hire a third market party to figure out why her office cannot retain or recruit attorneys. Well, I can tell you for free, it's her. She needs to resign immediately or her constituents will recall her. She is a politician and not a competent prosecutor, and everyone knows it. You cannot fix the problem with money. Thank you for listening.
Thanks, Ms. O'Kelly. Others who would like to speak to old or new business tonight? All right, hearing none, we will go ahead and come for a commission discussion on old business first, and item eight is the Community Benefits Agreement between the Levin Group and Unified Government of Athens-Clark County. The Mall Area Redevelopment Committee, which met as recently as this afternoon, is still working through this, uh, so this will again be moved to the 21st in tandem with the, the rezoning and future land use element that we talked about earlier, and so I entertain a motion to hold this until the 21st.
Motion to hold till the 21st at the same meeting referenced before?
Second.
All right, I've got a motion from Commissioner Hul and a second from Commissioner Hamby. Commissioner Hul, any follow up?
No.
Mr. Hamby?
No, sir.
All right, uh, any further input from the body?
I, I do want to ask a question.
Yes.
And, and when will, should we expect to be able to see the documents needed, the Community Benefits Agreement and the financial analysis?
The, the hope is by this coming week from Friday, uh, excuse me, this Friday, again, still in process, so we don't know exactly when that's going to be done, uh, but certainly what will be the case, uh, and, and Commissioner Hamby brought up this point today in the Mall Area Redevelopment Committee meeting, is that, um, all of the supplemental documents will be available for you and for the public.
I, I just want to make sure that there's enough time for all of us who are making this decision to have enough, they're, they're very, um, thick documents.
They are, yeah, and so what we discussed is that, um, from release of the documents till the Mall Area Redevelopment Committee meeting will be at least three days, and then there will be additional days prior to the mayor and commission meeting on the 21st. Follow up, Commissioner Hul?
Yeah, I guess I just did want to, you know, I've had a lot of constituents reaching out, press even, to ask about this, um, and I think there's been this perception maybe that we're sitting on reports that haven't been posted publicly, but actually, none of us have seen those reports, um, so we're, we're waiting to see them too. I think attorneys from all parties involved in negotiations are kind of going back and forth, trying to work toward a, a final product or as close to a final product as they can get before we get those drafts, was my understanding from today's meeting, so, um, the moment we get them, they'll be posted publicly too, is my understanding.
All right, uh, motion to hold, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries, we'll see that again. Uh, all right, uh, item nine, we discussed in a recent work session, and this is the Health Services Contract for In-Custody Residents of the Clark County Jail. There is an ordinance, uh, to amend the budget associated with this, I'll just have Attorney Drake read that right now.
An ordinance to amend the FY 2023 Operating Capital Budget for Athens-Clark County, Georgia, so as to provide additional funding in the Sheriff's Office for a new Health Services Contract for In-Custody Residents and for other purposes.
All right, uh, motion.
To approve.
All right, I've got a motion from Commissioner Hul.
I'll second it for one, A, B, C, D.
All right, motion from Commissioner Hul, second from Commissioner Wright. Commissioner Hul, would you like to provide some input?
Sure, thanks for enumerating the multiple components that we're approving, Commissioner Wright. Um, yeah, I, I, this is, um, an important and overview update to our health contract, and, uh, I, I look forward to the difference in the lives of the human beings that are held there that I think this will make, um, as well as the difference in lives of the people who work there that we're asking to do, uh, a, a, a pretty tough job. Um, and my approval of this, um, which is pretty enthusiastic, I think it, it, it gives us the best chance we've had in a while for improving human conditions there, comes also with a reiteration of the request to this body to, um, spend extra time working on the part of our very long strategic plan that emphasizes, uh, making efforts to reduce the jail population. Um, I think that has positive impacts on residents of the community, uh, and would also have positive impacts on our budget if we were able to do that. So with that, I'm happy to see this move forward.
Thanks, Commissioner Wright, follow up?
Um, yeah, I, I wanted to, um, speak to the details that are in this agenda item for anybody who, um, it's, the, the facts and issues are 20, 39 points, and they give a comparison of the current, um, contract and, and offerings and then the, uh, preferred. And, um, the history starts in fiscal year '04. I think that, um, the people who are waiting their time for prosecution, waiting to resolve their issues that have gotten them there and move on, um, will be greatly enhanced by them having comprehensive 21st century medical, mental health. What stood out to me in particular was, um, that the medication for assisted treatment for people, um, who may be in there for substance abuse, right now, it's cold turkey, and, um, I think that the chances of the person, um, modifying their behavior and getting this medical treatment so that when they do, uh, re-enter the community, uh, they have a better chance, and that the wraparound services and the release of this, of them with this contract has them signed up and enrolled in Medicaid, and, um, also having a week of their medicines to move into the community until they get connected with that. I just think that the, um, the outcome, that in, as Commissioner Hul said, while in our custody, the conditions will be better, and then I think their chances of an improved life will also improve with what we're doing, and, um, yeah, looking forward to this moving forward.
Thanks, Commissioner. Further input on this side? Commissioner Thornton?
Um, this one I'm going to support also, um, and I do think that this coming before us at this time, you know, with the so close to budget season and, um, uh, budget planning, some would say, why will we wait? But I do think that health and welfare of those incarcerated should just be just as important as if I had to go to the doctor. So I, I know there are some folk that think we should just wait and kind of roll it into the budget, but I, I don't believe that a person's health should be put on hold, so I would, I will be supporting this.
Thank you, Commissioner. Further input before I return to Commissioner Hul? Go ahead, Commissioner.
Yeah, sorry, I forgot to look at my notes before I spoke earlier, and there's one other thing I wanted to raise up, which is at some point, we're going to have to look at the health contract for our Corrections Department, and I would hope that at that time, we could seek to dovetail the two contracts into one. I imagine there would be some cost savings there, um, and maybe also an opportunity to improve services that people are experiencing on the corrections side of things.
Thanks, Commissioner. All right, there is a motion and a second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed?
Is there a funding item with this, Mr. Mayor?
Uh, yeah, yeah, you read the budget ordinance. All right, good, yes. All right, thanks, everyone. All right, um, all right, item 10 is, uh, the District Attorney's, uh, proposal for three additional staff positions, and there is a budget ordinance on this, so I'll, uh, ask you Attorney Drake to read.
An ordinance to amend the FY 2023 Operating Capital Budget for Athens-Clark County, Georgia, so as to provide funding to establish a gang unit in the District Attorney's Office, including three additional full-time positions and for other purposes.
All right, thanks, Attorney Drake. All right, I'd, uh, entertain a motion from the body regarding this. Commissioner Thornton?
Um, this one I'm going to, um, make the motion, um, to table. Uh, we are so close to budget seizing, see, budget timing, um, I just don't feel that comfortable, um, right now, especially when we're looking at all the, um, salaries for our attorneys. So I would like to make the motion that we table this.
All right, uh, there's a motion to table, is there a second?
Second.
All right, got a second from Commissioner Hamby. Commissioner Hamby, any follow-up comments?
I think that's, I think waiting till the budget cycle, and, and, you know, certainly we're doing some sort of survey on attorney's positions makes sense, uh, to help, help make sure we know what we're, we're getting into. And I will point out, there's some vacancies, I still attest that, you know, when we, as, as the folks responsible for giving the constitutional officers their budget, you know, certainly if there's money within the constitutional officer's budget, there, they should be allowed to use that, uh, in, in order to help them get their job done, so, um, so I don't know how that, that's probably a discussion for the budget, budget cycle as well, as we, as we look at that a little bit differently.
Commissioner Myers?
Um, I'd like to make a, a motion, a, an amendment to the motion to table it, to table it for two weeks until two weeks until after our discussion of our salary that is on our work session for next week, salary and compensation. And I don't know if I did that correctly, parliamentarily.
Are you suggesting, like, we hold to a date certain?
Yes, a hold to a certain date, right, yeah, for two weeks.
So that would be our regularly scheduled agenda setting meeting? So are you anticipating action on the 21st, then?
That's right, because we're already having action based on our moving the mall votes until then as well.
All right, there's a motion to hold until the 21st of this month. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
I'm not sure whether that market study would be done by the 21st?
Yeah, that was my question.
Yeah, so Commissioner Myers was referencing not the market study, which is the subject of item 13, but the work session, which is a week from tonight.
Is that going to be about the?
I don't know if you want to preview that, the work session item about salaries generically?
Okay, yes, well, there is a work session planned for next Thursday. There will be three items, one of which is relevant to the sheriff's request that y'all allocated funds in last year, this year's budget, last year, to look at deputy pay. And then we will also take the opportunity just to talk to you about what a classification system is, how it works, and why it's important to not change the structure or make any arbitrary decisions to try and deal with certain issues. So all of that will come out, yes, in the work session.
But Attorney, they specifically won't be a subject of that work session?
The DA is not part of that discussion.
Okay. I don't know if that changes your interest, Commissioner Myers?
Well, I guess I was wondering if a generic discussion of the classification salaries and the ranges, and how there's a, a decision made on where one can offer salaries within that range, like the ranges that were, that were in the agenda item for tonight, that went for Attorney One, went from, I can't get that up right away, but it was very broad. It was like from 658,000 to 88,000. And so I was wanting to understand better how a department manager can make the decision about, or who makes the decision, or how it's made about where on that range one is allowed to offer a salary at. Will that be covered?
Yes, and there is a policy around that.
And that, and that's a policy I need to understand more. So, I'm sorry.
Let me get to Commissioner Hul, and then I can return to other comment.
Yeah, I guess I'll speak to, if in two weeks, we don't feel like we know any more than we do now about whether this is a good thing to move forward in part, or in whole, or to deny, then we can always just still table it then. But, you know, recognizing the urgency of the issues that that office is experiencing, and the likely urgency other attorney vacancies are going to cause in other departments, I'd like to, my second for the holding till a date certain is just to give us another opportunity to consider it again, you know, and then we can decide then, like, how. And, you know, for what it's worth, I would hope that we might do the same with item 13, so that we can have that discussion with HR in the room, and figure out which, if either of these items, both or neither, makes sense to us to approve in accordance with that, that discussion. Because, you know, I definitely feel like I want to have that discussion before I approve another $50,000 contract, for example, but that's a separate item from this.
Okay, Commissioner Fisher?
Yeah, but I feel like we're missing a point. She's asking for monies for her office, and I think that attorney salaries is a different item, in my opinion. And I think we need to deal with her asking for the money to, to staff those other positions. I think that's what we're missing. And we, you know, we want to look at the attorney's salary, and I get that, but we need to deal with, well, now we're going to approve the 206,000, $207,000 that she's asked for to fund those positions. So I think that, I think that's what we need to deal with. And the attorney's salaries is a different item.
Commissioner Thornton?
After listening to Commissioner Myers and Commissioner Hul, I'm even more convinced that we need to wait till budget season, budget time. That's a bunch of money, and this comes out of our contingency funds. It doesn't come from the dollars that she has already for those vacancies, right? This comes out of our contingency funds?
I don't know how you describe Manager Williams, the source of those funds.
Yes, it's general operating contingency, which y'all budget a line item each year, and we've used it for other purposes, too.
But there's no way she, with those vacancies, and I want to make it clear, there's no way with the dollars that she has banked, she could use that money specifically for what she's asking for.
Well, so my understanding is that the commission, and only the commission, can authorize new positions, and that's one of the ask in this. It's also, so it's positions and the money to do it. So your consent would be, I think, needed to authorize the new positions, and then the money would go with that, too. Your question, Commissioner Thornton, she probably does have enough salary savings to cover those positions through the end of this year. I'd have to check. But they would have to be authorized first before you could even get there. But her request was for those positions, plus the funds to pay them.
But I guess it's fair to say that, conceptually, this would increase the number of positions in the office, and, conceptually, would increase the budget for the office writ large. And then sort of a separate question is, as it is the case with every department, A, is there some salary savings this year, and so, you know, maybe we met, you know, maybe we expended 1.5 million of $2 million, or maybe we expended 1.5 million of $2.3 million.
And said another way, Mayor, another, so it is, you know, when you vote on the next year's budget in June, you're probably not going to eliminate these positions if they were just filled. So you're really obligating yourself to those expenses in the ensuing year, too. So when we look at the revenue for FY '24, then, for instance, these mid-year budget adjustments are, like the sheriff and the healthcare, you know, that comes right off the top because you've got to fund it for next year. So you're, that's, that was the point that staff was making about trying to coincide with the budget, because you've got various priorities you're trying to sort through, and, you know, and going mid-year, then you're making that commitment for next year, and that's got to get funded.
Does that get at what you were looking for, Commissioner?
Yeah, and especially since we did our retreat with the big rock and the sand and the pebbles and, you know, I don't want to fill up the bucket with a bunch of little rocks and be responsible next year for that. So I'm, I'm where I am on this. That's my point.
Thanks, Commissioner. I haven't heard yet from Commissioner Davenport.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Just help me understand parliamentary procedure. Is it proper to do another motion?
So I believe, is this the, not the case, Attorney Drake, that if there's a substitute motion on the floor, you've effectively got two motions on the floor, and that substitute motion would have to be handled, and then if that fails to carry, then you would go back to the original motion, before we would look for a different, yet a different motion. I believe that's the case.
All right, thank you.
Yep, glad to help. Anybody else before I return to Commissioners Hul and Myers? Commissioner Hul?
Yeah, I just want to emphasize that the DA's office is in a staffing crisis right now, and we can speculate what the confluence of reasons are for that. But the duly-elected person who came before us spoke to the salaries being an issue, and that's not the only person who spoke to salaries being an issue. And I think, you know, it'd be helpful to, we've got a couple of weeks for staff to be able to do this, to do the due diligence, but I'm assuming with the vacancies that there's money there to, to move around. You know, what, what the district attorney said, Mr. Mayor, if I recall, in our, in our discussion, was that she was willing to eliminate a position and move that money into other positions to be able to pay more. I believe why we don't have an item before us today that does that is because that would be changing the way our HR department operates. It's not an appropriate thing for a constitutional officer to recommend, but it is the kind of thing that we, as a commission, could make a recommendation around to address issues that are brought to us by a constitutional officer. And I am not saying that this particular proposal in front of us is one that I'm eager to support. In fact, to be quite honest, I am not eager to support creating new positions, but I am eager to help a department that's in crisis get out of that crisis, if we can. And it seems to me like we can, and that we'll have more information about if and how we could, after we have the work session next week, as well as time to consider the other item on our agenda that talks about salaries generally. I think it's also worth pointing out that our jail population is more than double what it was during COVID, and that a lot of that, most of that population, as I understand it, though I'm not entirely sure, are people awaiting trial who the DA's office has to bring to trial. So the longer we wait, the more our jail fills up with its understaffed sheriff's department also struggling to keep up, with the medical contract that's going to take a while to get off the ground, and with all the courts backed up. So I, I understand that there are broader ramifications of making a change to an HR policy, and I do think we should consider those before we act on this, which is why I think we should have that work session next week first. But I also don't think we necessarily need to wait all the way until July before somebody who's only got four people out of 17 can start hiring more people, when the number one reason that they brought before us for why they can't is that they're not able to offer a competitive salary in a market that we all know is extremely stretched and hard to hire in.
Commissioner Myers?
Yeah, I want to just address the, the very valid point that my fellow commissioner, Dexter Fisher, brought up concerning the, the item on the agenda and the, and I guess my, the item and agenda and the funds that are required with the new, the new positions. And I think that what I am seeing is a possibility, if the information adds up in a way, is that it would, the information next week, or that I could gather, could give us a way to create a commission find option that would use the present budget and present positions as well, without going forward and adding another position, the shifting over. And that's what I'm still unclear of how we can help the, the district attorney do that. And I do want to say that we do have issues. I mean, we have the issues that Commissioner Hul was bringing up, but I read in the excellent agenda report how the police department in 2020, last year, expanded their gang unit from three to seven officers. And I'm not bringing that up to say, oh, they have those numbers, the district attorneys should have, have them as well. I'm bringing them up to just to say the gang challenge is a real challenge that our police department has also brought before us as well.
Thanks, Commissioner Thornton.
I keep thinking I'm not going to say nothing else about this.
Last go-around.
I do not want to go on record, looking like I don't want to support the DA office, okay? I do not want to go on, that, that is not the image I'm trying to paint here. What I'm saying is, we are going into the budget process. This would be a good, we know, we know what we're up against. And if there's a way that the money she is already has in her budget right now to pay for an attorney that specializes in gangs, I will support that. My problem, my situation is, I don't think we should be dipping and dabbing into our contingency funds. Not when she has money. If she didn't have the money, I get it. Let's, let's do what we need to do. If there is a way, Manager Williams, that we could give her the okay to use her money that she has, that's collecting interest for a position, I'm willing to do that. So I don't, again, I know, you know, we talked about the, the police coming in, and they done hired all of these folk, and we were supposed to get some data, which we didn't So I don't want to keep it understaffed. That'd be crazy. I vote for the, the sheriffs for the healthcare, and then I don't vote to get people out of the court. That don't even make no sense. I'm just saying that, is there a way we can let her use her money for whatever she wants to do that does not come out of contingency? That's all.
This is exactly why I was suggesting a work session. So I've got several things here. As you know, at unification, constitutional officers are given the opportunity to opt in or out of the personnel system. Personnel system is different from the classification system.
Mr. Manager, I've just been said several times, I don't know, it needs me to say the DA is not a constitutional officer. There's only four constitutional officers in Georgia. That's the probate court judge, the clerk of commission, the sheriff, and the tax commissioner.
She's an independently elected official.
And there's, she's an independently elected official, and there's a very big, some of the rights and authorities that constitutional officers have are not, are different than for an independently elected official. So I kept saying, Judge, be quiet, be quiet, after it was said, the fourth time, if it's time for me to interject that, because that's an important distinction. So she doesn't have those rights with respect to her budget that perhaps some of the broader rights that maybe constitutional officers have, depending on whether or not they've opted out. This is a complicated discussion, because it depends on whether or not that constitutional officer has opted into our personnel system. But I will say, I think the work session is necessary, you need to understand, if you change this classification system for these county employees, which is what they are, it'll have, it could have long, it could have wide-ranging ramifications legally for other positions within the government that are classified in our personnel system based upon pay scale and, and position, which is what you were going to say, right, Manager?
Yes, sir.
That's what you were going to say.
With, with that technical clarification, I think Manager Williams was identifying that, as an independently elected official, the district attorney's office uses the classification system.
Well, and I want to be clear, because I appreciate the questions, and, and Judd, thank you for that. Because with constitutional officers, there is, you know, I've worked in county government, so is Judd, and we understand that they have a certain degree of autonomy to run their operations, but they're dependent on the commission to give them the funds to do that, and it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a relationship to be cultivated, for sure. But the fact is that even though, I want to make this distinction, even though some constitutional officers, perhaps independently elected officials, had opted out of the personnel system, they are still subject to the classification system, the paying classification system. So we have 1,700 employees, but we have 400 positions. And so those 400 positions are all, you know, graded based on their job requirements, the knowledge, skills, and abilities that are required. And so they're measured against each other for internal equity across the organization, and that's no small feat, considering the breadth of services that we provide. But they're also for market purposes. And so what I would caution against, and why I felt like it'd be appropriate to have this meeting next week, is that to make any, and I don't want to use a term like arbitrary, but if you don't use, if you set salaries without any basis in knowledge, skills, and abilities, then it is somewhat arbitrary. And then somebody else can say, well, how come they're getting that deal and I'm not? And y'all, doing pay studies, we understand there's a lot of emotion that comes out after that, because people's value, they take the intrinsic value from what they're paid for their job. But it is, it is not an exercise I would recommend that we do behind the rail. I think we do, just like we were suggesting tonight with item number 13, you do a study, you, you know, in this case, the market, and then we do it for all attorneys in ACC Gov, not just the DA. And I would say, too, that I do agree this is an emergent situation. We do have attorneys in other offices. Other offices aren't experiencing this level of attrition at this point. I'm not, that, that's not, that's just a fact. And so before we start making, as Judd, Attorney Drake appropriately said, quick decisions that, that we need to deal with this emergent situation, there's no doubt about it. But if you create additional consequences down the line for equity and fairness in claims, I would, let's wait till next Thursday for y'all to hear more about how all that works.
Commissioner Hul, you've spoken three times already on this. We're going to go ahead and move to the item on the, on the docket, which is the substitute motion that would bring this to discussion on the 21st of this month, and I'm going to do a roll call, beginning with Commissioner Myers.
Myers?
Yes.
Thornton?
What am I voting on?
Do you want to discuss this on the 21st of this month?
She wants to vote on it.
Two weeks. I want to discuss it. I like that. No.
She wants to vote on it.
The second.
The motion is to bring this to a discussion on the 21st at this month.
So I still get an opportunity to say no, right?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll, I'll go with you. I do want to hear this.
That's a yes.
No.
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 I tried to.
No.
I tried.
Yes, it's a no.
All right, motion fails. We return to the original motion to We return to the original motion to table without a date certain from Commissioner Thornton, if we get a roll call there.
Yes. Ambie?
Yes.
Davenport?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Wright?
Yes.
Fisher?
No.
Hul?
No.
Hill Pepper?
Yes.
Myers?
No.
Two no, seven yes.
All right.
Three no's.
Three no's.
Three.
Three no's.
Who is it? I've got Fisher, and who was the other no?
Myers.
Fisher.
So, I think it's three, three no's, six yes.
Three six, pass.
All right, we've got that. All right, we are moving on to item 11. Item 11 concerns the concept, again, the concept for the Barber Street project, and entertain a motion regarding this item.
What?
A motion to approve.
Second.
All right, I've got a motion from Commissioner Myers, second from Commissioner Hul to approve the concept for the Barber Street project. Commissioner Myers, some input on this?
Yeah, I think that, I think this is a long time coming. We have had some public input actually on this. I was looking back in the history of this, and there was a survey that was put out back in September, I think, or actually, it was November. And we also, I knew that when we went on the tour with our, our Transportation Public Works people, we specifically asked about this and how we had brought, they had delivered, hand-delivered these postcards to all these homes along the Barber Street corridor. Right now, we have a project that is a 2018 project. It's thoroughly vetted by Athens in Motion, whose goal is actually, or whose mission is to give us advice on this. And I think what's really important to me is that this is a preliminary engineering design approval. We're going to, no, this is not the engineering design, this is the concept approval, and we will be later getting the engineering design approval that will come down the lane, the lane where we will see some more of the specifics. So, there will be more opportunity for public input on this coming down the road, and I look forward to that public input.
Commissioner Hul, a second, or any additional inputs?
Yeah, I really appreciated the walkthrough slash ride-through on ACC Transit on Barber. I actually walk this road a lot, and it's very dangerous to walk down. So, it's not just for bikes, this is also for pedestrians. I mean, there are some stretches where large trailer trucks are going by, and it's extremely dangerous to be walking on this road. So, I think this is good for everybody. It's good for people driving those cars and trucks. It's also good for the people walking or riding a bike. And, you know, without the fourth stretch, which I think is the thing that's maybe being a little bit challenged here, you don't have a straight connection to downtown, which is, you know, ultimately, I think what we're trying to build here is a connected network that goes to the core of the city. I was struck in our conversations with staff that approving the concept does not finalize the design. There's ways to narrow and widen the path to, in those negotiations with private property owners. So, more direct and detailed communication is to follow if we approve the concept tonight that allows people to work through those details around like maybe a narrower path because they've got, you know, some kind of old historic wall or fence in front of their property or something like that. But it does allow staff to move forward, where otherwise, they'd be totally stalled out. And that, in turn, allows staff to pursue grant funding to help pay for this. And I think, as we're all aware, things are only getting cheaper, I mean, only getting more expensive the longer we wait, you know, not getting cheaper. So, I do hope that we can move forward on this tonight. It is just a concept we'll have many more chances to review. And I also just wanted to check with staff, to make sure I'm remembering correctly, did our TPW staff, they hand-delivered to all the residences on Barber and also sent mail notices to all the property owners, right? So, people who were, you know, absentee property owners got a notice, but also renters who lived there got a notice as well?
Yes, there were door hangers put on there, and I think that that effort led to a 30% response rate from residents, where typically, we'd get more like 5%.
And then we also separately had that public tool, the public input tool, that people could chime in online, and that was from anywhere, you didn't have to live on Barber. How many responses did we get to that?
I don't, I doubt I would need to look at. But that, you are correct.
Hundred and eleven, yeah.
One eleven.
Yeah, which is a pretty good number, I think. So, you know, with all that in mind and recognizing that there's, you know, many more opportunities to hone in on the details, to meet the needs of residents who are directly affected, I'd like to see us move forward tonight.
Input from Commissioner Wright?
Yeah, I have a different train of thought on this project, especially since the one section in District Two, as Speaker Link brought forward, is, doesn't have a representative here. It changed drastically from when we saw it and studied it in 2021. When I did the walking tour, I thought I was addressing my concerns about the on-street parking, and that turned out to be the least of my concerns. I can see where the on-street parking does not need to be there for many reasons, but the, moving a perfect, well, what I saw is a perfectly good sidewalk when there's many areas that don't have a sidewalk in the community. The rising price of this, because it moves out of the right-of-way to move a sidewalk into front yards, there's a new building being built that would be part of that encroachment. It doesn't seem that we've got an open communication with the railroad company yet. I think that we need to work towards that before we move the concept forward, as well as us learning as a body, the corridor improvements that have already been engineered moving forward on Chase Street, which is also coming from that same area into town. So, I'm going to make a substitute motion to table this to where we can study it, also with when we learn what Pilgrim's Pride is going to be doing in their renovations. I'd hate to see us spending millions of dollars for a sidewalk that might not be, fit into the plan of what might be happening there. So, I have a substitute motion to table it.
I second.
I've got a substitute motion from Commissioner Wright, second from Commissioner Thornton. Commissioner Thornton, any further input?
No, I think the walkthrough was very telling for me last week. I'm sorry that I probably have not given this, that kind of attention before coming before this body. I think there are some, I do think there are some conversations with Pilgrim's Pride. I wish there was a way we could separate this and continue the work with Chase Street and come back to Barber Street since Trace, Chase Street was, has been rolling. If there's a way we could split it till we could get some more info, and that's a whole nother thing, I know. But I do think that, again, I need some more information, and if there's no way to split it, I guess I would have to agree to table it for now. And I don't, and I think we're talking about, what, $2 million more, at least?
And that's, and that's without understanding the price to pay for moving the sidewalk into front yards?
Right.
That's not right-of-way.
Yeah, I think I just, when we start talking about taxpayer dollars, I just want us to know what we're getting. Again, if there's a way that we could do, continue the work that has begun on that Chase Street side and come back and revisit Barber, that would be perfect for me, but I know we can't split it, so.
Commissioner Ambie?
Sure, thank you, Mayor. And, you know, I certainly can appreciate making sure that District Two is represented before we take any action on this. I think that's important, to have an advocate there for, or not for this position, or for this expenditure. I do like this concept. I like the concept of the two-way, bicycle thing. I am concerned, though, because I am concerned, you know, about the cost escalation. I know that, at the end of the day, may be part of it, but I have to justify to constituents in my district that are asking for sidewalks on Gran Allen or Westview or Millet Circle. I also have to look at the list in Athens in Motion and recognize that down on the list, not far from Barber Street here, is Millet Avenue. And you know the number of bikers that go down Millet Avenue on a given day to do this, and part of the rationale for looking at Millet Avenue is so that kids could get to Clark Central a bit easier. But I would argue there's probably more bikers on, I mean, there's a lot of bikers on Millet Avenue and the connectivity that would create. But the connectivity it would create, Westview's asking for like 500 feet of sidewalk that would connect them to South Lumpkin and out of the street of Westview. Gran Allen's asking for a sidewalk that, rough estimates, about a year ago, were $600,000 that would connect Gran Allen or connect Millet Avenue to Memorial Park. So, I'm just trying to weigh those, weigh those things in my mind and trying to develop priorities. And you all have them in your districts, too. And so, I think it's only fair, though, that whomever the District Two representative is within the next two months has a say in this as well.
Thanks, Commissioner. I will note that, obviously, this project has been in play for a long time, very long time. We have a priority matrix in our Athens in Motion Plan for a reason. You know, we want to make sure that the things, you know, that have the greatest latent need rise to the top. And of course, you know, we all recognize there's a great number of projects throughout the community, you know, east, west, and north, south, central, that need some support. You know, as a longtime advocate for a web of connectivity, one of the assets of this project is that it creates that web so that you can get from multiple places to multiple other places. And in this case, specifically, we can join the dollars and advocacy already on Prince Avenue with the development that we know is coming in the Newton Bridge corridor and related corridors. Of course, the Chase Street project is being funded through GDOT, so it's a separate funding source. So, it's forthcoming and has a plan that connects between Chase and Barber on Onita Street and then connects at that sort of multi-pronged intersection where Dairy Pack, Chase, Barber Street, and Newton Bridge all come together. So, I would advocate to all of you to move forward with the concept. If we get concepts back that are going to see cost estimates that are greater, you can choose some segments of this at that later date, but I would ask for that to move forward. So, any further input? Commissioner Hul?
Yeah, I just want to point out that the funding sources here is SPOLOST 2011 money, more than a decade old, for bicycles, and then SPOLOST 2018 money for bicycles and pedestrians. And we have since, since T-SPOLOST, sorry, T-SPOLOST 2018. Since passing T-SPOLOST 2018, we've hired both a BikePed coordinator and a Vision Zero coordinator. The Vision Zero coordinator, which is kind of a fancy term, is referring to someone whose job it is to find a way to identify a network of bike and pedestrian infrastructure that minimizes the number of fatalities that we've been experiencing in this community. And both of those staff members recommend this, along with unanimous support of the Athens in Motion Commission. So, you know, I hear colleagues' thoughts on other things that we need to fund, and I think that's true, but if we're hearing from the professionals we've hired that are tasked with looking at BikePed infrastructure, that this is the priority they've identified, and if we're hearing from the volunteer committee that's been digging into this in more detail than we could ever hope to, that this is the priority they've identified. And it also happens to time particularly well with the other developments and projects that people have already mentioned, as well as the Prince Avenue project that we just approved, which is the funding source for the last stretch if there's a gap. I don't see any reason why we wouldn't move forward now, strike while the iron's hot, maximize our opportunity for grant funding to stretch our dollars even further and help us get this done and give staff something to do. Certainly, if we're not going to do that, I'd like to hear a rationale for what the purpose of our tabling is.
Commissioner Myers?
Yeah, I cannot follow up Commissioner Hul's eloquence on this with quite the same eloquence, but I am like looking at the agenda report and reading over the history. And I do, I do want to point out that it was in 2018 that the Athens in Motion Commission presented its final report, which I believe, and the plan, which I believe was voted on unanimously. I realize that's a different commission, but its goal, the goal of Athens in Motion is to continue to evolve Athens into a more bikeable and walkable community with goals of connectivity, equity, and more users. This project in itself was one of the projects that the mayor and commission authorized staff to proceed with concept development, and isn't that what we're voting on tonight?
Correct.
Okay. This body asked the mayor and commission and staff, who've been working on this since 2018, okay? So, we're four and a half years after when that was, and this was one of the five recommended sections for us to work on in the Athens in Motion Plan and from the consultants that we're hiring. So, I mean, we talk sometimes about putting together plans and then leaving them, how worthless it is to leave them on the shelf. On the other hand, here, we have a plan, we have staff that have worked on it, and we have Athens in Motion Commission and a bike pedestrian coordinator and Vision Zero coordinator who are recommending this. So, here's an opportunity to use that plan and to use the specialized staff that we have.
Thanks, Commissioner. Commissioner Davenport?
Yeah, so, thank you, Mayor. I tend to support the original motion, but this is pretty much detailed, been worked out from prior commission and AIM, as well as it's a T-SPOLOST, so the voters voted on it. I think that needs to be highlighted. But it's been a work in process, but just to help us understand, Mayor, can you explain the difference from the technical, like nuance of a technical design versus concept? And in my understanding, a concept design would be like the Winterfield Firefly Trail, option A, then we voted for the nuance of where the actual trail is going to go. Am I correct in that assessment?
So, what this would allow is to enable that kind of more detailed engineering, you know, where we get into those questions of a rock wall is here, a stanchion is there, and those kind of items. And that then allows staff to go to market with bids on construction of this. Manager Williams, is there anything else you'd want to add to that?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Thornton?
I think that Commissioner Hul said he wanted to hear the rationale about why we want to table it. For me, like I said earlier, part of this is new to me in my district. This is part of the new redistricting, so I'm definitely trying to catch up. And if, and if any of my constituents want to know why I support it, I need to be able to tell them why I support it. That's my personal. The other reason, I think, I don't know who brought it up, about the new commissioner coming on board and having input. That election is in March, so there could be some legitimate tabling to give that new commissioner some input. This could be, you got to hit the, you know, hit the street running on this one, a pun of words, of course. I just want, whenever I make a vote, I just want to make sure I'm able to explain it. I can't explain this because I was not, I need to be brought up. The trip last week was very educational for me, in the rain. I didn't know, and so, but I still am not. So, that's my personal for the tabling. Whether the tabling is for June or something, I think, giving the new commissioner, whoever that is, some opportunity to have input, because they're going to oversee whatever we, whatever we decide on. So, those were my two reasons for agreeing to the tabling.
Any further input? Kind of the motion on the floor that we'll vote on first is the substitute motion to table, beginning with Commissioner Wright?
Wright? Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Hul?
No.
Hill Pepper?
Yes.
Myers?
No.
Thornton? Yes. Ambie?
Yes.
Davenport?
No.
Taylor?
Yes.
Six yes, three no.
All right. Thank you, Madam Clerk. All right, moving on to item number 12 and 13. These are new business. We need to consider these under suspension of rules. To entertain a motion for suspension of rules?
Some move.
Got a motion from Commissioner Thornton. Is there a second for suspension of rules?
Second.
All right, I've got a motion from Commissioner Thornton, second from Commissioner Wright. All in favor of suspending rules for these two items, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so we're going to move on to the substance of the items. Item 12 is a settlement resolution, which we have to approve occasionally. I don't believe there's a budget ordinance at this time to go with this. Is that correct? I appreciate that. All right, to entertain a motion regarding the settlement resolution.
Some move.
I've got a motion from Commissioner Wright. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, second from Commissioner Fisher. Any input, Commissioner Wright? Any follow-up, Commissioner Fisher?
No, sir.
All right, all in favor. Commissioner Hul?
Yeah, I just wanted to invite the manager, if he's willing to speak to this, to, you know, explain what actions, if any, county staff, particularly the Athens Clark County Police Department, have taken or plan to take in light of this incident and the settlement.
Well, I will note, you know,
Well, I will note, you know, as the settlement language does say that we're not admitting fault in this particular instance, so I want to be clear about that. But we're always looking to improve our processes at the police department and our interactions with residents, which are sometimes highly charged. And so in this case, you know, talking with the officers, reviewing our arrest procedures, you know, to make sure that the steps are taken that help to de-escalate a situation appropriately is what was done in this case.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign? All right. All in favor, motion carries. All right, item 13 does feature budget amendment, and I'd ask Attorney Drake to read that for us.
In order to amend the FY 2023 operating capital budget for Athens Clark County, Georgia, so as to provide additional funding in the Human Resources Department to conduct a third-party custom market survey study of ACC GOV attorney positions in response to staffing challenges in the District Attorney's Office and for other purposes.
All right, thank you, Attorney Drake. And just to be very clear, this analysis would regard all attorneys employed by the unified government in any department. Of course, as folks recognize, there is a District Attorney's Department, there is a County Attorney's Department headed by Attorney Drake, there's a Solicitor General's Office that prosecutes misdemeanors, and there are other attorneys who work in the courtrooms themselves. So this is about really all of these classes of employees. So I just want to make that clear. So is there a motion regarding this item? Commissioner Hamby?
I'm going to make a motion. I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve, but I want to make a comment if there's a second.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, second from Commissioner Wright. Go ahead, Commissioner Hamby.
Sure, thank you. You know, I am wondering, I mean, we know what attorneys make, we know what they should be making, and I hate to spend $50,000 on a study to tell us that answer. But be that as it may, if it helps us get to a good spot and helps us get to a good understanding about what attorneys should be making in our county for providing services that they provide to our court systems and to our government, then I'm okay with moving forward. I will say this, though. I think included in part of this study, and I'm hoping that they do this when budget comes around, you know, certainly we address this during some ARPA funding with our public defenders. Our public defenders also do a lot of good work here in this community. So as we're looking at this, I hope we're keeping in mind the salaries of our public defenders and bringing them on par with what the DA's assistants are making, the assistant DA's are making. In order for our courts to be fair, it needs to be fair on both sides. And so as we're looking, I know that public defenders is a, we supplement them, but I think that supplement ought to increase to match whatever this market study reflects that attorneys should be making. So do I need to include them in the motion, or is that just understood that we're going to do that?
Just a point of clarification.
Sure.
Point well taken. The public defender positions aren't actually in our classification system, they're a separate entity, and so you have an annual agreement with you. So you could, at your leisure or at your convenience, when that comes up, typically that is approved in coinciding with the budget, you could offer more funds for those purposes.
Right. And I'm sure whoever's, I'm sure Mr. Donley is looking at, would look at the study and make sure that their attorneys and his requests match something equitable for them and for us.
And that'd be my intent in budget preparation, Commissioner.
Okay. I figured it might be, so thank you.
Absolutely. Commissioner Wright, follow up?
Yeah, I'm glad that this is coming forward, because it hasn't just been the District Attorney speaking to the salaries. I can remember when Judd was having challenges getting market, you know, with the salaries to fill his area. And we work our attorneys a lot, and they dedicate a lot of time, and we've seen gaps of when, well, the workload is shared in, just like other departments, when there's an empty seat, somebody's making up, the work's still getting done, and it's tedious work, and we want to retain and be able to recruit and fill positions on all of this category. So I'm looking forward, hope this can be fast-tracked.
Yeah, and Manager Williams, is there an approximate timeframe that we would imagine for completion of this and recommendation from the Mercer Group that we contract with?
Well, they do have to conduct the study. And so I would say, you know, at least 30 or 45 days, and then we would return to you with the results of that study, and then you could contemplate what actions you want to take after that.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. Commissioner Thorne?
I'm going to be voting no on this, because I think, well, maybe before I say I'm voting no. Is there a legal reason that we have to have a study? So we can't do our own comparison of what other attorneys are making and come up with our own pay thing?
I'll speak to that.
Yes, sir.
I think there is a legal reason.
Okay.
I think that it, when you have an outside firm do it, and they've done it independently, it provides defensible information that we could use to defend if we were challenged by an employee.
Okay.
I think it's wise to do that rather than have staff do it.
Well, I'll vote for it.
Follow-up, Commissioner, or Manager Williams?
Well, and this hopefully is the same firm that's currently doing the sheriff's work that helped us with our lateral transfer program for our pay plan, so they're familiar with the mechanics of the pay plan.
Well, you know, I guess my question is not the study and not what we pay attorneys. And maybe we'll learn this next week, which I had not planned to be here next week, but now I am, because I want to hear this. I just don't understand all the stuff in HR on how classified and people get paid. I really am bothered by limitations that I think, it may be just gossip, on how we pay folk and how we have entry positions. So I'll be here next week just to hear that. But I think, from what I know, what people get paid in this county, it seems to be an HR issue. Whether that's legal or not, that's the way it seems.
Well, I'd like to defend HR staff on that, and...
Not the staff, the policies.
Well, I'd like, yeah, and those policies we should certainly go through. And it's my hope that we will cover, you know, the structure of the classification system, the principles of it, and why you do certain things. And I would just say that, you know, if we gave all our department directors the ability to offer whoever's coming in the door whatever they want to pay, you could end up with, in your case, you're making X amount, Commissioner Hamby's making a lot more, somebody has...
No, make me make more.
Should be. So, you know, I would just say, please come, and we will make it worth your while to give you a background in this, but there are legitimate reasons to have a defensible pay and classification system.
Commissioner Myers?
I'd like to make a substitute notion to table this for two weeks after that discussion next week, so I can better understand whether or not it's a classification system or the pay, or for the need to spend this $50,000, or up to $50,000.
Second.
All right, got a substitute motion.
And does that hold to a date certain, right?
I said to hold for two weeks till...
Substitute motion from Commissioner Myers, second from Commissioner Hul. Any follow-up, Commissioner Hul?
February 21st.
Yeah, so facts and issues six in our staff report lays out the ranges for Attorney One, Two, and Three positions. And if you go to our job postings, ACCGOV.com/jobs, click on it, you'll see the postings currently up for DA. And the range that's posted for Attorney One in the DA's office is $57,266 to $68,000, so $20,000 less than our currently identified range. So part of my rationale for why I would like to have our discussion at the work session and then consider voting on this, is I'm not convinced we need to spend $50,000 to meet, I mean, really, why are we considering this under new business? Because this is a proposal to try to address the crisis in our District Attorney's Office, but also the possible crisis that will happen in the Solicitor General's Office. Fortunately, speaking with our chief public defender, they're at full staff. Maybe that has something to do with the fact that they're not subject to our pay and classification system. Meanwhile, Solicitor General's not getting applicants. I think our own Attorney's Office is struggling to get applicants. So I have big questions about why we need to do a whole new study to identify an update to the range that might shift it a little bit, when we could maybe just change the policy and allow people to use the existing range to have more competitive salaries being offered.
I don't know, Manager Williams, if you want to note that the difference in the starting pay is posted in our job advertisement versus the full range of the position is posted on the agenda item.
And we can talk about that policy. I'd ask that we have the work session and go through these items before we start coming up with solutions on the fly.
I think that'd be great.
Our policy is basically five. We hire in everybody at the minimum, but based on their education and experience, they could get 5% of the midpoint added to minimum, they could get 10% if they have more education and experience, and they could get 15%. In no case do we ever give anybody the full end range of the spectrum. And so we don't advertise it that way, because it sets it up for failure. Somebody will apply and say, well, if the range is to $100,000, I want $100,000. Well, that's not it. Well, you advertised it. So we don't do it for that. But we're glad to go through these policies with you next week. But I would just ask, wait until the work session before you develop any additional solutions.
Got Commissioner Davenport?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I just want to, I tend to support this, or I want to support this. But how does coincide with our bigger countywide? And can blame, or Manager Williams, disblame, during our budget season, we'll also be talking about, potentially talking about our paying compensation holistically throughout the entire department? Can we incorporate, would this completely be separate, or can we incorporate that all together?
Thank you. That's a great question, Commissioner Davenport. So in the wake of, a best practice with a pay and classification system is every five years to revisit it. It's been five years since we last did the pay and compensation study, and it was 23 years before that. And so we're trying to get closer to where we ought to be. I intend, again, just like we talked about earlier, the same principle, but based on the relative priorities that are facing us as we go into the budget season, I would hope to be able to offer that, or propose that we would revisit it for the non-public safety employees. Because as you know, it was just a couple of years ago that we converted to a step plan for our public safety employees. And then five years from that, three years hence, we will revisit those. And so over time, continue to make sure that we follow a defensible and legal methodology to assign value to these positions that fits within a system that we would consistently honor when we are offering folks employment here.
Commissioner Hamby, sure?
I would just add that holding this doesn't change the fact that we need to look at the attorney salaries. It doesn't change the fact that once we do look at the attorney salaries, the offices sure may be full, but that doesn't mean that they're being paid in the manner that they should be paid. I mean, Judd's office is not down that much, but his attorneys may not be paid as much as they should be. The same for the public defender's office, who are full, but they probably need some more money. We're going to find that out with the market study that does this, that shows that this needs to occur. So the sooner we get moving on that, the sooner we can address it during our budget cycle and be prepared to talk about it. So, and get the folks that are doing the study time to do a thorough job with it. So I don't know that the work session on Tuesday has any implications for how we need to move forward with this.
All right, so we'll have prospectively two votes. The first would be on the substitute motion to hold this until the 21st. The second, if that does not succeed, would be on the motion to move forward. So the motion on the substitute motion is Commissioner Myers, so we'll begin the roll call there.
Myers?
Yes.
Thornton?
No.
Hamby?
No.
Davenport?
No.
Taylor?
No.
Wright?
No.
No.
Fisher's no. Hul?
Yes.
Culpepper?
No.
Two yes, nine no.
All right, we're going to turn to the original motion, which is to move forward with the study, and the motion was from Commissioner Hamby, so we'll begin the roll call there.
Hamby?
Yes.
Davenport?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Wright?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Hul?
Yes.
Culpepper?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Nine yes, zero no.
All right, motion carries. All right, thank you, everyone. All right, now is that exciting time in the evening when there is public input on any item that was not on tonight's agenda, and the rules of that public input are the same as for most of our earlier input. There's a three-minute opportunity. The light will turn green when you begin speaking and introduce yourself and the item to which you'd like to speak, yellow when you have 30 seconds remaining, and red when your three minutes has expired. So would anybody like to speak to any item not on tonight's agenda? Step right up. All right, here in the crickets, we're going to go ahead and get reports from several members before we get a motion to adjourn following the executive session. I have just two things, I have two items that I'm going to assign to the Government Operations Committee. Both of these really continue some earlier work. The first one I would like them to address is just the community benefits agreement portion of our leasing policy. The Attorney's Office has some prospective updates they would like us to review and have returned to the full body. The second for Government Operations is the creation of the public safety monitor function within the Office of Operational Analysis or other appropriate ACC units. So those are those two things. I've emailed those to the clerk. We have, Manager Williams, any reports tonight, sir?
I do have one piece of news I'm very proud about, and I want to share with you. You know, we really do have an award-winning staff, and many of our departments are leaders in their relative respective state associations, and as you know, we win awards on a state and national level. I'm proud to share with you that our own assistant manager, Josh Edwards, was named as the number-two local government influencer in the nation by the Emerging Local Government Leaders Organization. And that's no small feat, I can tell you. I'm very proud of him. I'm proud of all of our staff, and I think it's right that we recognize, Josh. Thank you for that.
Great. Good work. We're basking in your glow, Josh.
All right, Josh.
All right. Attorney Drake, any reports tonight?
No, Mr. Mayor.
All right. So I am going to begin with Commissioner Myers, and we're going to swing around counterclockwise to Commissioner Thornton, and Commissioner Thornton, upon conclusion of your remarks, if you would ask that we adjourn upon completion of our executive session.
Promise.
Commissioner Myers?
First, I think we did, as a commission, we had a retreat, I guess it was two Fridays ago, and I think that we did an excellent job tonight following these 10 actions to follow. And so I want to sort of pat us on the back for that, agreeing disagreeably and such. I also want to put a special shout out to our Transportation Public Works and our bike, pedestrian, and Vision Zero. People who put in the grant for the million, and received the million-dollar grant that is going to be able to give us an updated, a new Vision Zero policy that will enable us to get more federal grants and federal monies, along with an update to our Athens in Motion Plan. Obviously, there's some of my colleagues here who are eager to get some input into that, so hopefully there'll be an opportunity to do that. We, as a community, are on the forefront of transportation tendencies in this country in terms of our complete streets policy, our Vision Zero, our Athens in Motion, the kind of speed management programs that we have. And I'd like to see us continuing to go in that route and to be an example to other communities, and also to be able to get lots of that federal funding to do stuff here in Athens, Georgia.
Commissioner Culpepper?
I want to piggyback off what Commissioner Myers said about our 10 action items and how we acted today. We respectfully agreed to disagree, and I look forward to working with this group and continuing the same type of work.
Commissioner Hul?
Thanks. I'll piggyback on that. It's a good retreat. I do think we definitely have some work to do with regards to de-escalation and use of force, especially deadly force, which tasers do qualify as. Tasers can and do kill people. I would ask that our Public Safety Civilian Oversight Board review a random sampling of body cam footage to inform that work. I think that might be a good place to start from. You know, there's a lot that can be done before something gets to a big incident like the one we had to address earlier tonight. Do you want to point out for the benefit of the public that there is a Transit Development Plan Survey at ACCGOV.com/surveys that you can fill out, and we would love for you to fill out? fill out, and also that there are two RFPs up for the Eviction Prevention Program and the Summer Programming Freeze Development Violence Prevention at ACCGOV.com/ARPA. And then, two things in District Six, got the next District Six Community Cleanup in Stonehenge. We'll be meeting on the Ave right at the Sculpture on Sunday, February 26th at 4:00 PM, working with our Neighborhood Leader, Shadai Watkins, on organizing that. And then the next District Six Town Hall will be the very next day. It'll be centered on transportation in West Athens. I can't thank enough our awesome TPW staff for the help they're gonna provide and the wisdom they're gonna share at that event. We'll talk about traffic, bike pit infrastructure, all of it. That'll be on Monday, February 27th at 6:00 PM in the Cooperative Extension, which is at 275 Cleveland Road.
Thanks, Commissioner. Commissioner Fisher? Commissioner Wright?
No comment.
Commissioner Taylor?
No comment.
Commissioner Davenport?
All righty.
Make up for lost time?
Give me, give me some, give me a moment.
We're gonna take a restroom back here soon.
First of all, I'd like to welcome the future.
What did you say?
Welcome the future inclusive office.
Okay.
Remy, Dr. Remy Els. Thank you for sending that out. I look forward to working with her when she comes in, in three weeks. I would like to thank Terry Hollis and Mike Wharton and others and staff for allowing us to tour the Cedar Creek facility. That was really nice. And thank Hul and Thornton for attending. I think that was a, was a wonderful experience, and I thank everybody for participating in that. I encourage my colleagues to go visit our facilities. These are all winning awesome facilities, and their staff is, are awesome for running them. Thank, I really thank Zai Kappa, if I got that right, for doing the Cedar, the Cedar Show's road and Davis Road cleanup, because that is becoming a trash dump. So, thank Zai Kappa, and thank Cedar Creek homeowners, well, Cedar Creek Association for their invite of me and Myers to co-speak at their first since COVID annual meeting. That was really nice, and the food was fantastic. And happy birthday, happy 40th birthday to Mama Sid's. Bless it.
All right. Commissioner Hamby?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I, as super-districts, I used to represent Cedar Creek for, for a number of years, and you're right, they did have some good, good food at their neighborhood meetings. And I'll say, I'll say this, I would have an easier time following the 10, 10 actions to follow and be, 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 be more pleasant to work with if Commissioner Thornton weren't sitting next to me. So, so.
We can change that right there. Go, a vacancy right over there. Go.
But I'm, I'm not gonna keep us any longer. I do have one request of the, of the manager, and that is, I know we've got a work session coming up, that, that traffic and neighborhood safety improvements are a part of that discussion. And I hope we see in the presentation that, I know there's, I know there's some budget limitations that they're looking at, but I hope we see in the presentations that the dollars that they need to cover those, those neighborhoods and those streets that have already been through the process of gathering signatures and meeting the criteria and everything. So, hopefully, hopefully, it, it might require a budget amendment to, to get those through this fiscal year so that we can, so that we can hold good on our, you know, if somebody's been through the system and met the criteria, done all the legwork, and staff has helped get all the signatures and stuff like that, then, then we need to meet our obligations and provide, provide what it is they were asking for. So, I'd like to, I hope, I hope that's in the presentation.
And I would say this, too. Part of the process is, after all those things that you mentioned, meeting with the neighborhood and helping to, to pick which they, you know, which they think is gonna be most effective. So, if the neighborhood has not progressed to that point, you know, they could choose rapid flashing beacons, they could, you know, radar signs or different cost. But we, we could put an average of what it tends to be, and that gives you an order of magnitude cost.
I guess the neighborhoods I'm thinking about, the streets that I'm thinking about in particular, are all asking for, for speed tables.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. I do want to thank Patrick for inviting me to his water reclamation plant. I think that we, and, and the week before, we did the quarry visit, which I do think that we should steer our community to all the positive things that we have in this community. Usually, when we come here, it's always, "You need to do this," or "This didn't happen." We have some great stuff. We got folk that are, departments that are winning awards, and we just cannot depend on the newsletter to get that word out. We, as commissioners, need to be promoting the good things and not everything that needs to be done. So, I do want to thank staff for all that they do. ARPA funding for the youth development, I sent you an email. So, Manager Williams, so that deadline did not get extended?
No, it, it did not. And, and I also sent an email late today about, you know, direction on change in RFP processes late in the game. And staff's response, I was gonna send you a response on that, but basically, you know, the way it is structured now, staff only has two weeks to, to flip this thing around. So, they've got other work they have to do as well. I think what y'all did in indicating a desire to go back to 2021 baseline versus 2022 is you actually made it easier for the applicants, right? So, they could default to their previous numbers. So, I did not extend the deadline at that time.
Okay. Well, I hope folk are listening, because that's not the message that.
Same here. I told a constituent today that the deadline was gonna be extended. I was under pressure when we had our meeting, work session, that it would be. So, if I did, I'm, I'm sorry.
No, no, I apologize, because, you know, I mean, there were a lot of things stated that day, and I didn't take that directive and turn that, and operationalize that. And again, I should have responded to you when I, when I approached staff about it, like, "We only have so much time to do this." So, you know, if, I would like to caution that in the middle of an RFP that we start changing parameters. So, maybe we need to talk about how we bring all of that to you in advance and let you approve what we're gonna put out in the timelines. But, you know, last year, we were in a bit of a crunch on the time, you know, it just, it takes some time to go through these things.
So, practically speaking, just if, if you could let constituent organizations know, you know, pre, pre-ARPA numbers are the baseline, so prior to last summer or 2021 is the baseline, but deadline's Friday. So, just let folks know.
Okay. My next thing, I know we all got a, a email, a, a letter from Benny Coleman. I think that he really wants to see all of us in the community. So, I know that Commissioner Hul does a lot, and I guess I need to do more. And lastly, I was trying to text this to Kelly, because I feel kind of like I'm boasting in a kind of way, but I'm just saying it. I was elected to serve on the National League of Cities as the Vice Chair on University and Community Council, and it is designed to work in city, communities with colleges to, and municipalities to work closer, but to also have advocacy on the federal level. So, I don't know what it all entails. I haven't been to my first meeting yet, but I will be serving as Vice Chair. I am serving as Vice Chair.
Do they know what they've done?
Do they know what they've done? No, and that's why I didn't even tell you about it. So, there, y'all can clap for me like you did, Josh. Josh, you ain't the only one that got recognition.
Commissioner, thank you for taking that on very much.
But now is the, the main thing.
Adjourn?
Meeting is adjourned.
Can you make a motion to adjourn the meeting upon conclusion of the executive session?
Executive, I make a motion that the meeting will be adjourned after executive session.
So, motion, second from Commissioner Wright. All in favor, please say aye. Thank you all.
Can we take a five?